We're going to get started this evening. Let me just do one thing here, make sure that you guys are good. Okay, because I don't see video. Yeah, I don't know if they're working on that. Let me just see. Hold on.
Hmm, so where's Dieter? It's all different now. I don't know why. Um, it's not Echo or I don't know what happened, but yeah, we just double-checked everything. It says it's this, and then it's the video is not, it's not the video. We just saw the matrix.
G plug. Okay, let's start again. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission. 22nd, I'm sorry, the 22nd of August of 2023. The Planning Commission meeting, it's being broadcast live on Pacific Coast TV's website, as well as Channel 27. Few comments for anyone who's in Zoom and in person. The Planning Commission chair will open the general public comment section of the agenda. At the time, community members are welcome to speak on any of the not-listed items for this evening's agenda. For the specific items listed on the agenda, there will be public comment opportunities during the discussion of those specific items. Three minutes will be given to those commenters. We will begin with the in-person comments first and then move on to the attendees on Zoom. Those wanting to speak will be recognized with a green speaker card or a virtual hand online that will appear. Please make sure when you start, please speak clearly and state your name for the record. If you're online, please dial star six to raise and unraise your hand and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. I will now turn it over to Victor Hernandez for translation as we do these meetings in Spanish as well.
Thank you so much, Bridget. Muy buenas tardes. Les queremos dejar saber hoy vamos a estar interpretando toda esta reunión de la Comisión de Planificación de la Ciudad de Hacmude en español. Para poder acceder lo que es el canal de audio, por favor, haga click en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla y después seleccione su idioma, el español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to remind staff and Planning Commission and public if they could make sure that they speak straight into the microphone so that our public can hear clearly as possible. Thank you for your patience, and I now turn it over to Acting Chair Gossett.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Gossett. I'm acting chair for Chair Hernandez, who's not here this evening. At this point, we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, can you take roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Reddick.
I am here.
Commissioner Johannes.
Present.
And Acting Chair Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Gorn and Chair Hernandez are not, are absent at this meeting.
Okay, I think we'll pass on approving the minutes. I don't believe we have a quorum for that meeting.
Yeah, that's correct. We'll have several sets to attend to next meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for anything that is not on the agenda tonight.
I see no one online that is raising their hand, nor the public.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. At this point, we'll move on to item 1A. The project is the Caltrans Highway 1 Pillar Cedos Creek Bridge Structure and Scour Project. And I believe Doug, you're going to give a presentation?
Yes, thank you. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, the project planner. This is a project that we received the application this year, but we've been working on this for a few years now. General location, I think most people in the, would know where the Pillar Cedos Creek Bridge is, just an overview here. This red line shows the actual work area. And I think what's important, we've got one single access here. Earlier versions you may have seen in the attachments to the staff report discussed a little bit different layout with closing down some highway lanes and things like that. The project has evolved. It's a, it's a smaller footprint now, single access from the, that right turn lane that goes over to Highway 92. At this point, there probably will be some disturbance of traffic on that right turn movement during mobilization and demobilization primarily, which would be a few days each. Once they get to work, we don't really anticipate major traffic impacts there, but they are required to give us a traffic management plan. This, just an overview of the different habitat types there. The blue is all riparian. The green is the actual creek area. This one's a little bit hard to read, but again, the blue and the green show up for habitat. And if you can pick out the areas with the hash marks, that's generally where excavation and working would be taking place. And again, at certain points in the process, we were looking at a larger area of disturbance. Much of this work will be underneath the overpasses where there's, there's virtually no vegetation to disturb. So it's primarily getting into the site access, staging areas for construction materials, that sort of thing. So the, the purpose, it's a bridge that's got some years on it. It was built in the 1950s. The bridge scour erosion around the supporting structures was something that was identified by Caltrans as an issue back before the 22, 23 storms. And certainly after this last winter, I think everybody's aware that we need to pay attention to this. Needless to say, Highway 1 is pretty critical infrastructure for the coast side. Additionally, there are some benefits of just doing the work now. Doesn't require closing down the highway. It's sort of minimal impacts on the Esha, the riparia and the creek as opposed to if we're at a point where, you know, the bridge had to be replaced, for example. Couple of key factors, all the work is proposed to be completed in a single dry season, probably next year. One of the things we don't see a lot of here will require a temporary diversion of the creek. While they're down in the creek working, essentially they'll build a cofferdam, divert the water into a pipe until it's downstream from the construction and then release it. There is biological monitoring for every step of that, especially for migrating salmonid fish, that sort of thing. Another thing we're not real used to here is a project where the applicant is simultaneously getting permits from just about every state and federal agency in the area. And so I just want to kind of clarify, if this were a hotel project or something and it might require a 1602 permit from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, we would probably do the coastal development permit first and then take on the other agencies because it was, it was just clear from day one, this project's going to require approvals from everybody. The applicant has been pursuing all of those permits simultaneously with the CDP. We've all been talking to each other periodically, making sure everybody's on the same page. Another thing's a little bit different, Caltrans is the lead agency for SEQA. In California, you have an option if you're a government agency, like typically somebody would be looking for a permit from us and we would be the, the lead agency to perform the SEQA work. There is an option for other state and government agencies to, to be their own SEQA lead. And so they, they've done that, that worked, city has commented on it. There's also in support of the federal permits, they have National Marine Fisheries Service, Biological Opinion, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I would note the draft mitigation and monitoring plan that was in the packet does a good job of consolidating the requirements from the different agencies. I think a key point is if one agency says you have to replace trees at three to one and another agency says five to one, the Caltrans position is they'll just do whatever the, the more onerous requirement is. So it guarantees that if there are some differences between our local coastal land use plan and say what California Department of Fish and Wildlife usually wants, at a minimum, they would have to meet our land use plan requirements and standards. And if, you know, another agency wants more, then they'll have to do that. There's a very detailed work plan in the supplemental, application supplemental information in the packet. This is just a quick summary of the general process. Initially, there'll be a lot of work from biologists going out, doing pre-construction surveys, the areas need to be fenced off where it's no work allowed, identifying trees that have to be saved or can be removed. Once they get through that stage, they'll develop the access down into the site with some vegetation clearance to get in there. At that point, the creek diversion that I've discussed, and then they'll start getting in the creek bed and doing some excavation along the bridge supports where they will eventually install the partially grounded rock slope protection. The goal there with the excavation is to lower the level of the RSP so it doesn't really interfere with the stream flow or alter the characteristics more than necessary. And then there's some fine tuning, the channel training, which protects the, the bridge structures, but also provides better wildlife habitat, in particular for migrating salmonids, gives them some eddies protections to get out of the current and rest. Towards the end, they'll remove the water diversion structure and start full bore on revegetation, erosion control. And then for a number of years, they'll be monitoring and reporting of the restoration efforts. There are performance standards that are required, also reporting typically on an annual basis. Generally, it's three to five years. I think in the mitigation monitoring plan, they note that the Bay Area Water Quality Management District may want 10 years, so there, there will be quite a bit of monitoring. So as I mentioned in the staff report, because of all the other agency involvement, our role was not so much focusing on wildlife protection or water quality. All those agencies have very well-qualified professionals, biologists, geomorphologists, engineers. So we focused for this coastal development permit primarily on, on compliance with our coastal land use plan, our zoning ordinance, general plan. And the couple of issues that come up are policies about environmental resources, visual resources, and just general quality of life. So to be clear, this kind of work is permitted in both the LUP and the zoning code. It says if there's no feasible alternative and the project is to protect existing structure, it's allowed. Some of the other standards, the development will not permanently impair future habitat value, temporarily impacted Esha must be restored, permanently impacted Esha may be mitigated off-site if there's no other way to do it onsite. And based on our LUP standards, if there, there probably will be some off-site riparian mitigation, our standard is three to one. Quality of life, we, we looked at potential effects on traffic on Highway 1, connecting city streets. With the project as designed now, it appears that those impacts have been minimized as best they can. They will have to submit a traffic management plan that we'll review. So we'll minimize effects on busy summer weekends or morning commute hours during big festivals, that sort of thing. And again, the high rail will stay open, there's a single access point, they do have to notify the neighbors before they start work. For the offsite mitigation, it's a little bit of a moving target where we're Zoom is kind of focusing in here. The city has had a CIP project for a few years now, which involves some restoration of Pillar Cedos Creek, the rest riparian. And it's, it's sort of trudging along. There's been some funding issues and hard to keep the momentum up with competing capital improvement projects. And so we, at some point, we sort of took that off the table for mitigation for this project because it just wasn't clear where it could be done or what the city could, could pull together. And so Caltrans did look at a couple of other sites. One is up at the Pacific Ridge Development. They have a, a large open space area. There is a drainage that runs down just north of Terrace Avenue. The other side is YMCA Camp Jones, which is over in the county, up in the, the mountains east of that area. If they do mitigation, I should mention there are two projects that kind of get lumped together here, one on San Gregorio Creek, one over here. If they did have to do offsite mitigation for the other project, the YMCA camp might be a better option. But some things have sort of pushed the Pillar Cedos Creek project back to the front burner. Literally, there was a fire there a couple of weeks ago in one of the homeless encampments and police and fire and various agencies are involved. And so City Manager's Office has, has gotten involved and we've discussed the option with Caltrans of taking some of their mitigation requirements and implementing them along Pillar Cedos Creek. We haven't dialed in exactly where it would be. We're looking in generally an area from down by Safe, behind Safeway up to Main Street. There's various encampments there that have caused some environmental damage that we, we need to deal with. And so Caltrans likes that idea also. It's good for them. They're already in that area working. It's less mobilization and all of that. So that's what staff's recommending is of the, if we can work out the details, and we also have to get four or five other government agencies to agree on this, that's our preferred option, and we'd like the Planning Commission to weigh in on that. There's a last minute change here with the Naomi Patrick Trail that runs underneath the overpass there. The original plans included removing that trail because they were going to excavate there, place some of the RSP, backfill it, and then replace the trail on top of that. Somewhere along the line, their engineers looked at and thought, well, this may not work because we have this grounded RSP there, and by the time we build the trail on top of it, we may crush some of the RSP and it's not a good thing. So Caltrans did redesign their project and they pushed the RSP further away from that bank. So technically, they don't have to remove the trail. In the meantime, portions of the trail were destroyed in the, the storms last winter. So we're working out the details. Caltrans has indicated they're, they're willing to work with the city on reconstructing that trail, partner with us on that. We do have to sort out who's sort of the lead on permitting with the outside agencies. So the details will be worked out, but we think it's, it's a viable approach. Here's a quick photo. It's, it's in worse shape than I remember. I haven't been able to go down there because of a leg injury for a while, but yeah, definitely needs some work. We looked, we looked at the condition that talks about replacing the trail and thought about editing it some and then decided it's, it's okay as written. It's the part that's highlighted in yellow here. That it's, it meets the spirit of it. I, I don't, I just don't think we're far enough along that we can pin down more detail on sort of each party's participation. So we're recommending to just leave it as written, if, certainly if the commission has some comments on that, we're, you know, willing to accommodate if we can. Interestingly, I've received no comments from anybody on this project other than a couple of communications with Planning Commission. We did expensive, extensive noticing well beyond our normal 300-foot radius, published in the newspaper, as well as posted the site in four different locations, focusing on the bicycle trail entrances so that people who use that would at least see it. So staff's recommending that the coastal development permit be approved with some guidance from the Planning Commission on their preferred mitigation site. And that concludes the presentation. I will note, we have a couple of representatives from Caltrans here and a small army of Caltrans technical experts are logged in, so if you have any questions, I think we can get into it.
Thank you for that, Doug. Okay, at this point, I will open up a public comment or public, yes, a public, the public hearing for this item. Yes, please. And if you don't mind coming to the podium so we could hear you in the mic. Thank you. Wait, we can't hear you.
My name's Doug Menke. I live on Belleville Boulevard and I use that bicycle underpass several times a week. And so, yeah, it's got one, one bad section that's like 20 feet long that, where it's buckled. And there's a lot of mud that's collected on the path that is residual from that storm. I think it would be great if we could get someone in there to, to clear that mud off the path. Also, the brush has really overgrown. I can't ride through there without ducking way down on my bike. So I think even before we start doing all this mitigation work, let's try to make the path a little more usable. Also, I, I think you commented a little bit about homeless encampments down there. There are a lot of people living there. I don't know what accommodation you're going to make for them when all this work gets done, whether they need to be moved out or what, but that's an observation I have. Yeah, those are the main things. It'd be really great to see the, the mud cleared off the path and the brush cleared so that at least at a six-foot level, there's, you don't have to duck.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that would like to speak out online?
I see no one.
Okay, I will close the public hearing for this item. So at this point, we'll move to clarifying questions. Do any of the commissioners wish to start?
Thank, thank you, Vice Chair Gossett. I, I do have one clarifying question for Mr. Garrison. You and Caltrans obviously put a lot of energy into this, even though all the details are not yet finalized. Doug, I wanted to ask if Caltrans has specified yet exactly how the staging will work, or where the staging will be.
We've discussed that pretty in depth, and I think we're settled on that. It is shown, at least in one of the graphics, primarily, it's all going to be under the bridge or nearby there. It'll all be within the right of way. There won't be anything sitting on the shoulder of the highway or that sort of thing. It's all down in the site, and primarily, as I said, underneath the overpasses are very clear. The Caltrans reps could probably give you a little more detail if you want.
So that stretch that is to the east of Highway One between the entrance and exit point and the creek, that wouldn't be staging visible from the highway?
I think it's primarily access. They are going to have to sort of grade a dirt road in there. There could be some materials there. I don't know that we've confirmed one way or the other. It does have to be kept open for vehicle access, so it's fairly limited what they could do. It's because of the angle of the property line, the right of way, it's a fairly narrow strip of land when you get up towards the access point.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't have any other clarifying questions.
Commissioner Joannis?
Yes, I do have several, but I'll wait till everybody else does this, questions first this time. Just wondering, why is NEPA required?
That's because of the Army Corps of Engineers permit, I believe.
So there's no federal funding involved? Is there any federal funding involved in this from Caltrans?
I would defer to Caltrans representatives on that.
Hi, I'm Dylan Lennabacher. I'm with AECOM. I am supporting Caltrans District Four on this project with the planning and with the permitting as well. Caltrans has been delegated the NEPA lead status by the FHWA for this project and other projects across the state. So during the environmental document phase, when they do CEQA, they can currently do the NEPA process as well. So that includes Section Seven consultation with the federal wildlife agencies, coordination and consultation with the state historic preservation officer, all those activities that are required for NEPA. Whether or not there's federal funding, sorry, do you know? Actually, Ramel Pardo is online on the Zoom call, and he's the project manager with Caltrans, and he would have a better insight into how this project is funded, to specifically answer your question about whether or not federal funding is part of the project. It's potential, it's being done under Caltrans Shop Project, which does include some federal dollars. I don't know if Caltrans knows at this time which dollars are being used for this project, but if it's possible for Ramel to chime in, I think you probably have some.
Dylan, can you hear me?
Yeah, he's there.
There he is. Go ahead and introduce yourself, Ramel.
Okay, sir. Good evening, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. This project does have federal funding. As to the amount, I need to confirm, but yes, there is. And Dylan is correct, we were delegated, and NEPA will be required along with CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that explains why NEPA is required, is because there is federal funding involved in this, and that's why this is a joint CEQA-NEPA document, because I think the state has applied for the FAST program, is what I read. So I'm assuming that's why. So that answers that question. The next question would be, the storms damaged some of the trail that, recent storms, the December 2022 through January 27 incident period, damaged the existing trail. And I'm just wondering if the city has applied for FEMA funding for repairs or for the CALOES funding for the trail? And that's the first question.
I'm not in the loop on that. I know the city is responsible for routine maintenance of the trail, even where it's on Caltrans' property. That would be a question for the city engineer, probably Works Director. I just don't know if we have.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm wondering if Caltrans were to participate in this repair of the trail and coordination of the trail, I'm wondering how the environmental documentation for the FEMA portion of the project would work in conjunction with this project, and would the environmental documents be necessary? Because I'm pretty certain that both documents would be necessary as well. So I was just wondering how that would dovetail, especially when, Doug, you mentioned that, you know, there's been a slight change in the coordination now with the city and the Caltrans working together to assist in the project. So I just wanted to see how our approval of this project would impact whatever is coming down the line if this were a federally funded project under the disaster emergency program. So that's an outstanding question I have. I have other questions, but I'll go ahead and have you.
Okay, I'm happy to ask a couple of questions. They're in no particular order of importance or anything. I wanted to know if Caltrans would be in, well, if Caltrans would notify the San Francisco Public Utility that manages the dam at the top of where Pilositos Creek is dammed. The reason being is if they decide to do dam maintenance work, sometimes you need to lower a reservoir level a bit. And it would be a shame if they started maintenance work on the dam, and you guys weren't aware of the cofferdam that's been put in place to prevent water from hitting the piers. So that's one of my questions, that I was just curious if that's part of the plan, because I didn't see any mention made of the San Francisco Public Utility being notified about this project.
I'm going to ask Ramel to chime in on that one as well.
Sure, thank you for the question. We will take that question duly noted. The creek diversion system that we design is based on the high-flow, historical high-flow events for the creek. However, I don't know, we will look into that, about any releases that PUC may do upstream at the dam portion, madam. But that was a really good question, and thank you. We will note that, and we will look into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Second question is, has this type of project been done anywhere else in the state successfully, where you're diverting a stream in order to repair a bridge?
I would say yes. I personally have done it myself when I was with Caltrans at construction, for construction. Yes, we have creek diversion installation and successful construction of bridge work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let's see. I noted that there's that USGS gauge meter that's used to monitor flow and the depth of water in the creek. Will that be impacted at all during this project, the meter or gauge?
I think I can address this, and if my understanding is correct, that gauge is, I'm not sure how far downstream, but I believe it is outside of the Caltrans right of way and downstream, is other cities' understanding as well? I'm not aware of a gauge within the Caltrans right of way, and I believe that gauge would be downstream, and it would not be affected by the project.
Okay, thank you. And I do have more questions, but if we want, we could just move around the table.
I'm also concerned about the unhoused that are along the creek, because I did, I walk that trail every once in a while, and I did notice the fire. And I did meet and say hi to a lot of the unhoused and the residents of that area. And I noticed in the staff report, it mentions that, that, hold on, let me see where it is. I marked it here. That recent, in recent years, the creek has been degraded based on human activity. And I'm assuming that is meaning the environmental degradation. I'm concerned about how will Caltrans or the city accommodate those unhoused, and how will they be protected during construction? Less interested at this point in the mitigation measures, but rather the mitigation to human life. I'm also concerned about regarding human life and downstream efforts. You know, there are a lot of studies that are in the report that date back to 2019. There was one from 2001. Maybe there's a few site inspections or sites that were, actually, a site walk that was done in 2019. Nothing to show that there was any revaluation of the site since the storms. And that concerns me only because I'm wondering if the design would address the damages that are there now? And how does the design, as it stands right now, affect the downstream population where we had the major flooding and the sewer treatment plant? So I'm not sure if the design is increasing flows, we're removing 41 trees. How is that affecting the hydrology based on today's data that's out there? So two questions. One about the human activity and the population that resides in the creek, and the other is?
Well, I can address the population question. The city has our own internal team of outreach people who work with the houseless or homeless or whatever we choose. And they have been involved with previous activities along Pilositos Creek, as well as other parts of the city. And they work closely with San Mateo County, with a number of nonprofit organizations. It's a fairly extensive process. They go in early and get to know people. They bring in social workers. They make opportunities available to try and facilitate for people who want it to move into some kind of transitional housing and on from there. And so that's baked into how the city approaches these scenarios. And we would, we've had this conversation with Caltrans in the past where they were, I'm not sure if it was the sheriff's office or somebody, had started complaining about things underneath the bridge. And the city has worked with them to coordinate cleanups and that sort of thing. So that part would be standard practice for us. Again, we would start a couple of months before any construction would happen. Our team would, they know many of the residents down there, because they've been working with them for a couple of years, three years now. So there is a process for that. And some of this, you know, is there transitional housing available in the area? There are a lot of variables that we do have to sort of drag in the other parts of the city that deal with this and get their input on that early. And there will always be some people who just will move down the creek and set up a camp somewhere else, and that's sort of their choice, I guess. So that's the housing side of it. I'm going to defer to the engineers on how up to date the studies are, and have they looked at scenarios like this last winter storm, that sort of thing.
If I have a question, I have a question on the unhoused. So in Caltrans's sequence of what their project will look like, you know, from staging all the way to construction and demobilization, I didn't see anywhere a line item that actually shows the interaction between, if, you know, the city and Caltrans to address any unhoused folks that they might come across during that time. And I'm wondering if that could be added to that process to make sure that, you know, those folks are protected, because, you know, we can do something a month ahead of time, and then somebody reappears over there. And so what would happen? What's that monitoring look like at that point in time?
That is correct. The Caltrans workflow is more sort of engineering oriented. And I think their preference is to work with the local community on, you know, these kinds of issues. So it would happen. I think we could add, formalize that somewhere in the material to say that they'll start coordinating with the city some period of time, three months or something, prior to construction, to sort that out.
Ramel is raising his hand too, to talk.
Honorable Chair, regarding the unhoused, yeah, Caltrans does have also a very similar process to what gentleman Douglas Garrison said. The plans and the specs, I think that's what you're talking about, is more geared towards the contractor. However, Caltrans does have a unit within our department, primarily with maintenance, where we do give advance notice of any work being performed, offer any kind of services that they choose. Again, you know, I'll need to know, I need to dig into the details, but what gentleman Douglas Garrison mentioned is very similar to the process that Caltrans does dealing with unhoused. We do it several weeks, I think even a few months, prior to any work being done, and we definitely give them advance notice of the work that's forthcoming. So hopefully that helps.
Any information on the hydraulics based on the current storms or the studies that would support the design based on today's site assessments?
I'm not the hydrologist. I am the project manager, but my understanding is the project is geared or designed to not affect increase or decrease or impede any kind of flow through the creek as it is now. We aren't, environmentally speaking, we are not allowed to impede any migrating fish or wildlife. As for the hydrology or the flow of the creek, it is the goal of the project to maintain the existing flow as best as possible and to protect the bridges, not to increase or decrease the flow in the creek at all, affecting downstream factors or livelihood.
Yeah, hello?
Yeah, go ahead. You can speak.
Hi, this is Shannon McCarty speaking. I'm with HDR. I'm one of the consultants working for Caltrans on the hydraulic side and was part of the hydraulic modeling. So we did have a site visit where we had a few geomorphologists go out a few months after the storms so that we could see what the site conditions were like after the most recent storms. And that was used to inform our channel grading design. And exactly as Ramel said, we developed a channel grading that conformed to the natural state of the channel and didn't affect the hydraulics of the channel. So we were trying to match the existing conditions and evaluate different fish passage criteria and make sure that it either matched existing or provide improved conditions. Thank you.
Please.
Dylan Natabacka with AECOM. And I just wanted to point that there is a hydraulics technical memorandum that was included with the application that does discuss the studies that, that were, that were presented just a moment ago.
Yeah, that, that was the one I was referring to. And it included studies that were pre-storms. And it included data that, you know, they talked about the SKUs. And they also talked about, a little bit about how the debris accumulation may, could have affected it at the time of inspections. But they said that they didn't notice any debris, which didn't logically fit in my head because the storms would have created a lot of debris. So the question I had is when was the bridge inspections performed? Because that's where it cited that at the time of the bridge inspection, inspections, there were no debris, there was no debris noticed. Therefore, they didn't use that information to skew the hydraulics of it. So I just, it's just a question because it doesn't fit logically to, in my head.
I don't know, Shannon, if you, you can respond to that. I know that, I'm not sure if you're talking about the original, the bridge report?
It's Appendix D is where I'm reading.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let the engineer that prepared that report respond.
Hi, yeah, just give me one moment. I'm going to pull it up just so I can see what you're referring to. Is this of the Structures Hydraulics Report? Or the? Would you mind listing the name of the report that you're referring to?
Okay, so I don't have the agenda report, the list.
I, I have the agenda. I think it's Hydraulics and Hydrology Branch, Appendix D. That's the title of the report that's in our staff report. I don't know if you can see our staff agenda.
Yeah, I believe that report is for the Structures Hydraulics, which is referring to the modeling for the partially graded RSP design. The report I worked on was for the channel design where we did go out to the site after the storms were done and looked at the geomorphology of the site and measured certain site-specific characteristics such as the bank full width and the active channel width and used that to design the proposed channel dimensions at the site.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the hydrology of the entire, not only of the, the environmental side of it, of the structural side of it as well. Because I'm concerned about the sand plant and also the downstream population. So yeah, you know, you may not be able to address what I'm asking. I'm not sure if somebody can.
Well, there's, there's two hydrology reports. Pilar Cito's Hydrology Summary Memo, which was the report done by Reco or Rico? Reco?
Through the chair, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
Commissioner Johannes is asking if any of this assessment was done since the, the storms this winter? And both of these hydraulics memos are dated 2022. So I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the name of the lady who was commenting a little while ago. I think the question is, had any of that assessment been more recent than the storm? The atmospheric rivers that ended in March?
Hi, yeah, this is Shannon speaking again. Our hydraulic summary memo was revised after the storms. And our latest version is dated May 30th. So you may not have the latest version.
Yeah, we did not get that in our staff report. I don't, I believe not. No, I didn't see it.
I didn't see anything from this year at all.
Okay, thank you. Well, would you be able to answer, answer Commissioner Johannes's question based on that? Or are you focused only on the fish channel that is being created?
Yeah, I apologize. I can only speak to the channel design. The other report is out of my purview.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the other report, if you don't mind me saying, is from the Department of Transportation. It's the Chief Structural Design Branch III, looks like.
Hello, it's me, Romella again, project manager. That sounds like, that's a Caltrans Structural Hydraulics Branch. And their, their analysis was based on, I guess, pre-storm events. I believe that's the one you dated, 2022. So yes, a lot of those analysis was for the design of, determination of the placement of, I guess, RSP and the most prime place to place it to protect the bridges. So I guess it's safe to say that it did not consider these past 2023 storms.
Okay, since, I think this question might, well, maybe it's not really a question for Shannon. But when I toured the site just the other day, I noticed there was a boardwalk installed across the creek. And I didn't know if, I, I thought that that might block the passage of the juvenile fish. So I don't know if that boardwalk could be removed today since a significant effort seems to be proposed to improve the migration of the juvenile fish. And right now, we do have a boardwalk going through the middle of the creek.
If I may, that may be a city matter. Do you remember approximately where it was?
It was right underneath the bridge. I, I want to say closest to the west side. It's visible if you go underneath. And it's, it's near where they're going to do the rerouting of the channel or the, the Talvag is, that's going to be installed. Please.
So I was out at the site before the meeting today and I didn't see a boardwalk out there. But I'm not surprised to hear it. It's a dynamic area. And it seems like there were lots of other debris, both natural debris and, and human debris that was brought into the creek. So that said, at different times when we surveyed this location, we find that it's like most channels in waterways are, they are different at any time you go and look at it. So what may, what maybe you've been there last week?
Well, no, I was just there actually the day before. So I don't know, maybe someone removed the boardwalk. But it looked, there was a definite boardwalk installed.
Oh, I believe you, 100%. 100%, I hear you and believe you. But yeah, as, as, if, if it's something that the city is going down and maintaining that area under there, if it's a Caltrans maintenance item, we'd be happy to coordinate with you, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, honorable chair. We will make a note and ask our Caltrans staff to take a look at it. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess just to, to clarify this business, people from Caltrans and the city who have been down to this site in recent times, are you able to assure us that the, all the studies that were done prior to the atmospheric river storms are still valid?
My interaction with Structural Hydraulics, placement of the RSP, the, the scope of this project is to restore and protect the structural integrity of the bridges. And those designs, I do recall it's based on a 100-year flood event. And I don't know how, what kind of flood, rain event we had this past winter. But I, I think with a certain high level of confidence, their design should withstand at least a 100-year flood event. As for placement of the RSP.
Well, I guess I won't put words in Commissioner Johannes's mouth. But I, what you made me think about was if there's any change to the topography or the, or the hydrology down there that would, that would make the existing plans less than perfect for, for that job. But I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing anybody say that there's been that kind of dramatic erosion or, or other, or otherwise changes to the, to the riparian corridor.
That's correct. My dealings with Structural Hydraulics is they're walking a fine line between protecting the bridge integrity and ensuring not impeding or affecting a fish habitat or a fish migration. So that was a fine line. That was their edict or directions. And they, and this was the most, best case, least, the least intrusive, like the gentleman Douglas Garrison mentioned, in protecting both the bridge and the environment. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I, I'm more concerned about the downstream effect. I, I understand the bridge has to be protective and I protect it. I understand that the fish and the habitat needs to also be considered. I'm more concerned about the flooding that was, that occurred to the population and to the housing down below. And I'm also concerned about the sand plant down below. So this is, these are completely different things I'm, you know, I've asked. I understand the fishery, I understand that Caltrans has done their diligence in that. And I understand the Caltrans necessity to protect the bridge and the abutments. And that is very clear. And there's no question about that. And I would anticipate that the recent storms causing additional, you know, damage that needs to be addressed. My concern is the changes in the course of that creek, how does that affect the design? Or how would the design be affected? And how has the changes affected that downstream portion? And I don't know if it's beyond the scope of this project. But I think somebody needs to take it into consideration because we are repairing something to a past event, not to a current event. And is that sufficient? And is that repair now affecting that downstream effort? Because we know that flooded and caused a significant amount of damage, not only to the residential area, but also to the sand plant. So that's my question, not necessarily only the environmental. And I understand if this is beyond that scope.
Yes, I guess to answer the question again, madam, the, the project's scope is specifically beneath the bridge, does not go any significant distance upstream or downstream. So therefore, the overall flow or alignment of the creek will not be, I guess, affected with the exception of the one directly below the bridge. Because again, we're just putting rocks around the, the, the bridge pillars and embankments at the bridge site specifically. As for locations, any significant distance upstream or downstream relative should remain the same. With exception of any kind of fish habitat that we will be required to place for, again, allow for the fishes. But the overall flow of the creek, again, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not a hydrologist, but will not be affected. It's, it's a small, short segment of the overall Pilar Cito's creek length. I mean, alignment, I guess, of the creek. I don't have the overall length of the creek, several miles or so, or maybe at least a mile. But within that mile, we have a small segment underneath the bridge, just putting rocks around the column. And that's what it basically entails this project to protect the bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I, I'm a little confused about the rerouting of the Naomi Patridge, Patridge Trail. Because you indicated that they don't need to resurface that trail. But I was wondering where it would be rerouted during the course of the construction?
Well, I, I think it's a practical matter during construction. It probably needs to be closed off just because of all the construction activity, the equipment for safety reasons. To address the, the member of the public who commented about the mud and stuff. The Caltrans project, probably the earliest would be next summer. I think the city could, if there's funding somewhere, go down and do a little bit of cleanup before then. But, so I, I think whether Caltrans is going to have to remove that trail and replace it during construction, I think we probably would still want to reroute traffic. There's a couple of options. One would be, fortunately, we just restriped Main Street. And we have dedicated bicycle lanes on both sides that go to a signalized intersection, go straight into the Strawflower Shopping Center. Also, other people, I think especially pedestrians, could walk up and down the north side of Highway 92. There is a sidewalk there. There's no sidewalk on the south side. So I think there are viable options. Before anything got closed down, we would have, really as part of the transportation management plan, firm that up with some, have Caltrans put out signage to direct people that the trail, you know, is going to be closed and this is a safe way for you to go to get where you're going.
Thank you. I have another question about traffic management in terms of the, during the mobilization and demobilization. So I, I, I did learn that the closures would be temporary rather than permanent. Would you utilize social media and other methods to alert the travelers about the lane closures? And detours?
Yes, Caltrans uses our website. And on top of that, typically 72 hours prior to any kind of traffic, placement of traffic devices, those portable TMS signs that typically put up. And it won't be a, it won't be a closure or whatnot. Basically just a shoulder closure of that slip ramp from northbound 1 to westbound 92. So it's primarily the shoulder closure. And just to allow ingress and egress of construction vehicles in and out of the site from the shoulder.
Thank you for answering. And then I don't know if it's too soon to talk about off-site mitigation. But in the report on the monitoring and mitigation draft plan, Table 2 listed a 1.9 acre wetland habitat and they called it coastal wetlands. And, but made no reference or mention of the wetland at all in the report. So I was wondering where that wetland is located that was mentioned in Table 2 of the draft monitoring and mitigation report. the draft monitoring and mitigation report.
Is that the San Gregorio project?
It potentially could be. So to clarify, this project has two locations. One is outside of the coastal zone. So we're really only here discussing the one at Pillar Cidos. The other one is on State Route 84 at San Gregorio Creek. So that mitigation and monitoring plan combines both project locations. The areas that were probably referred to as wetlands in there would have been the riparian areas at Pillar Cidos Creek location, right? So there wouldn't be separate, you know, quote unquote, "traditional wetlands" like a swamp or a marsh. It is the riparian zone along.
1.9 acres of riparian, it's listed as 1.9 acres of wetland habitat. You're saying that would have actually been a riparian corridor rather than a wetland?
The 1.9 acres refers to the amount of mitigation that we anticipate would be required? I'm sorry, I'm a little too tall for words. I appreciate that, thank you. The 1.9 acres refuse to the anticipated amount of mitigation that we anticipated for off-site for this project. The actual impacts are a lower number. And it would be riparian, correct?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another clarifying question. I noticed that the city thought it important to call out in the agenda report that the proposed project would not interfere with the city's housing goals. Why was that so important to call that out in this project? Was that something that we need to anticipate, or?
That's just covering all the bases. We do an analysis of consistency with the general plan. I think oftentimes our focus is more on the coastal land use plan, but the general plan does have a housing element, circulation element. And this is just to clarify that in the coastal world, you always sort of have to state we're not expanding road capacity, because that's kind of a hot-button issue. And that if you're not increasing that capacity, you're sort of therefore not affecting housing. That's the sole intent.
Okay, thank you. And then, just, I noticed in one of the reports, it said, I think it was the city's staff report, that said, the south surrounding area is commercial. And is that zoning potentially going to be changed because of the housing that's going to come up in that south area?
There is an approved subdivision right along the creek, just east of there. When that was approved, they did not change the zoning. The use is changing, but the residential development, but the zoning stays the same. Is that where you're referring to?
Yeah, and what about the farmworker housing that will be going?
On Kelly Avenue?
Yes.
I think, I'll defer to Jill on what the plan is for zoning on that site.
Thank you. Jill Ikas, Community Development Director. Regarding proposed housing development at 555 Kelly Avenue, the land use plan updated the land use designation for the small 555 Kelly Avenue parcel to public facilities, which is consistent with the property where we are located right now. The entire Ted Adcock Community Center is in the public facilities. Land use designation and the land use plan further allocated the workforce housing overlay to the entire Ted Adcock Community Center campus, including 555 Kelly. And the zoning path for 555 Kelly is to move it into public services. In advance of that occurring, policy 1-2 in the land use plan holds that land use plan policy is the top tier relative to the zoning while we're waiting for zoning implementation.
So the South Shoreline Station then will still, is Shoreline Station part of what you just talked about?
No, thank you for clarifying that. And it's interesting, because Shoreline Station has two different property owners, and then, of course, the city has these facilities here, and they all do have some cross easements for access and for parking. But there is no proposed change in the, there was no change in the land use designation for Shoreline Station from the land use plan, and there's no proposed zoning amendment associated with that. And Shoreline Station is not identified in the housing element as a housing site.
Thanks. You mentioned the off-site mitigation, and you brought up one from San Gregorio. So I was interested in finding out, what was the criteria that was used to select certain off-site mitigation sites? You know, specifically why Pacific Ridge, and then why the YMCA? And then, we don't know how the human activity at the Pillar Cidos Creek and how that, I mean, is that part of the mitigation that Caltrans would need to provide? Because it's human activity, not related to the construction. So just curious to see how those all interact with each other and how they were selected.
Well, I can answer a small part of that. The Caltrans mitigation is specifically to restore riparian vegetation in a suitable location. I don't think we can draft them into code enforcement and those sorts of things. The city will have to certainly be involved with the population and those questions. So I think that answers that part of it. As far as how Caltrans selected their sites for a suitable riparian mitigation, I would let them, you know, address that.
This is Dylan. I can speak to that. I hopefully briefly, when we're seeking mitigation opportunities within a project's area, we first want to try and look to see, are we working in the same watershed? And are we finding a mitigation target that is providing habitat that is the same as what is being affected by the project? So those are the main general criterias. Working in the Peninsula, mitigation opportunities are very challenging to find, and they do take a long time to get in place. So we're seeking all opportunities we can. We're coordinating with several, the San Mateo Regional Conservation District on opportunities with them. We're working with the city to explore opportunities with you as well. But those are the main targets we're looking at for identifying mitigation opportunities.
Can I ask a question about the mitigation plan? Who approves it? Do you know Doug?
Well, essentially, everybody has to. It's a requirement from all of the other agencies for their permits. It's also something the city would require to make sure it's, again, we're sort of deferring to the experts at some of the other agencies on wildlife and that sort of stuff. But it does have to at least meet our standards in the coastal land use plan. So if it says you have to replace it three to one, it can't be two to one. So we will have input into that, and we can veto anything that's not consistent with our policies and regulations. But again, I think a lot of that, the, you know, the wildlife agencies, the water quality agencies are going to have probably stronger input than we do.
In terms of the off-site mitigation?
That's subject to all of the agency's approval also.
And another question I have, in the biological area that was studied, I noticed a log jam west of the bridge. And I was, but they only mentioned that the log jam on the east side was going to be removed. Would the log jam on the west side also be removed as part of this project? It's a little further downstream, but there's a big log in the middle of the creek.
I think, one of the issues is, after these storms, you know, if you wrote this, if you said you're going to remove it and report in 2022, things look different now. And so we do have to recognize that it's a dynamic environment. And not to harp on this, but once you start talking about removing log jams, then you're dealing with five different agencies. And so you just have to work through that.
I mean, but they already mentioned they're taking a log jam away on the east side of the project. So, I mean, there's a log jam very nearby on the west side. So why would that be much different than what we're dealing with now? Okay.
I think that's because they're relying on that report from prior to...
Okay, so because conditions have changed?
Yeah, they're relying on the report that was presented. I think they list several, they list on page, on the Caltrans documented, yeah. It's, they list, they say that this report makes extensive reference to the bridge maintenance report, general plan reports, they refer to, you know, reports from 2019, reports from April 28, 2001, hydraulic modeling in June 2020. So I think it's relying on what they saw at the time when they conducted the inspections, and that's when I wanted to understand when would those inspections done. So I'm thinking that anything that is there now is, was not recognized then, because it actually did say here that they didn't see any debris at the time of those inspections.
Right. So...
Please.
So I hope I can provide a little clarification on that. We've been looking at this project for well over three years and doing studies and surveys at the site to identify what baseline conditions are. You're absolutely correct, the conditions have changed. The reason that the log jam was written into, specifically written into what we're providing to this commission, is because during the Section 7 consultation with the National Marine Fisheries Service, there was a log jam identified on the upstream side of the bridge that was potentially directing flows into the pier walls that would have, you know, provided risk to the structure. And there was also some concerns with that agency of that log jam also providing habitat. So there was a lot of discussion during our Section 7 consultation about what we were going to do about that log jam. Since that time, that log jam has removed itself, and it's no longer there. But as you noted correctly, there's another log jam downstream. So this project's priority, as Ramel has stated, is maintaining and protecting the transportation infrastructure on the site. And also making sure that, you know, fish passage flow conditions are appropriate and meet at least what existing conditions are. So if there is a risk to the structure, or if there's a risk to those flow conditions being met by the log jam that is there now, or perhaps there's another log jam, that one goes away and another one appears, and it presents those risks, it would be addressed as part of the construction activities.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, so if the log jam would only affect the structure, it would be taken care of? But there would be no assessment made if that log jam were to affect the downstream population, or residential population, or the sand plant, right? So it's basically, Caltrans is looking at to protect their infrastructure, which I understand completely. So that's the lens by which Caltrans will look at whether a log jam is affecting their project, regardless of whether it's potential for the other project, because Caltrans doesn't take the liability over anything other than their particular project, correct?
Correct. Caltrans priority is protecting the transportation infrastructure for this project and meeting the requirements of the wildlife agencies that were issued in the VO.
Ramel's online, too. I don't know if he wants to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Very good question. As weird as it might sound, not all log jams are made the same, although, and we are dealing with five different agencies. As for where one log jam may have been approved to be removed, the other log jam may not have, because one agency, although we may look at it as a potential hazard, another agency may look at it as a habitat. And by removing that log jam, we just remove housing for, I guess, fish. And if we remove housing for fish, then we have to mitigate. And so what you did say is accurate. However, there's also other aspects that we have to consider with environmental restrictions, and we take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we want to talk a little bit? I think, Doug, you asked us to talk a little bit about our preferred mitigation off-site, or is this the time to maybe talk about that? Please.
Thank you, Vice Chair. In deliberating on this application, I think that probably none of us loves the idea of this construction happening in Pillar Cidos Creek and the riparian zone. But as Mr. Garrison has articulately stated in the staff report, our land use plan policies, 6-47 and 6-51, make it explicit that when public safety infrastructure is to be protected, that this is a permitted use. I think there are several things to like about the proposal that Caltrans has put together with input from the city and the other agencies. I think it's obviously great that Highway 1 stays open during this work, and I trust that disruption to the right turn lane from Highway 1 to 92 will be minimized. I think that Caltrans willingness to cooperate with the city on the repair of that trail is also a very good thing. And I would hope that the plan and commission will voice a strong proposal for any off-site mitigation that has to take place, that does happen in Pillar Cidos Creek in the city Of course, replacement of vegetation and trees within the project zone is to be maximized, but probably there will have to be some off-site mitigation. And our Pillar Cidos Creek needs all the help it can get these days with all the impact that's been there. So I would trust that the city will voice a strong desire for any of that off-site mitigation to be in Pillar Cidos Creek on the, in the city limits. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruddock. Commissioner Johannes?
I agree that if any mitigation is to take place, it should happen within the city limits and within Pillar Cidos Creek, or any other creek that would need mitigation measures. We have many creeks in this town that are in trouble and may use some mitigation and or need for mitigation. So I'm, you know, hoping that within the watersheds that we have that feed to our city streams and ditches, whether man-made or not, I think those mitigation measures should be relied upon in our city. So yes, I would want to see that happen within our city. And I do see the need for, you know, repairing whatever scouring is, but I'm just hoping that perhaps some of the reports could be updated to verify whether this repair is a valid repair for what's there now. I don't know. I don't know if there were bridge inspections that were done after the storms to see if this repair that is being proposed is adequate.
Thank you. I concur with both the commissioners, and I also like the idea of off-site mitigation to occur on Pillar Cidos Creek within the city boundary. Are we allowed to require that? Are we allowed to require that as a condition of approval for our CDP?
Well, the winner, the attorney was going to clarify that. I'm just going to throw in my two cents first. I think we can, however, because of all the other agencies, again, I, if, if they can agree on this, then we might have to come back and do an amendment to the CDP if we had to change that condition. That would be the only concern I would have.
I think that was a great policy and legal response. So yes, that would be the downside of including it as a condition of approval, as if things changed and it didn't, it became infeasible, they would have to come back here and amend the CDP.
Thank you.
I do have a question regarding that. If it did need an amendment, what type of amendment would it be? Would it be a major or minor, or how does that work?
I would say we would need to see the context, but if this commission wants it brought, any changes brought back here, we can certainly accommodate that.
Everyone's entitled to their philosophy on this. I'm, I'm, I'm of a mind to look for ways in our modern lives to not complicate things more than they have to be. And I, I would be willing to trust that Caltrans would take the, the city's strong preference there into account.
Any other comments at this point?
I'm just wondering if this project is on any timeline associated with federal funds expiring or project, you know, deadlines?
Hi, Madam Chair. It's you, Ramel, again. Yes, we do have funds, state and local and regional funds that we need to get in place within a certain deadline. Typically, we go by Caltrans fiscal year, which is typically end of June 30th, 2024. Every June 30th, basically, is the end of fiscal year. And for this project, this was, I mean, a little bit more information is needed. It was already, it already failed the last fiscal year. We are now in this overtime, I guess you could say, time. We have up until this June 2024 fiscal year to ensure this project is a success. If we, for whatever reason, don't make it June 2024, then it would be, I think the funds will be, a good chance of the funds being lost and project just being scrapped.
So just to clarify, you, you plan to have all your permits by June 2024?
Earlier, earlier if possible, because there is a lot of more other.
Okay, in order to secure your funding. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
We hope by sometime this year, actually. So.
Oh, so this brings up a question that I have. You mentioned the project failed last fiscal year. What does that mean?
We filed a time extension for fund allocation. This was supposed to be in construction this year, however, because of the permits. It was, it was a little go, can you hear me?
No, I, I can't hear you. It's a little garbled.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
It was, this project was scheduled originally to be done sometime this year, but because of the various limitations and restrictions, we weren't able to meet last year's deadline. So we filed for a time extension and we are actually in that time extension period now with no, for a second extension, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I, my brain's working, trying to figure out the logic. So if this project scouring is so detrimental that it needs to be done, wouldn't funding be available again because it is detrimental to the, to the integral structure of the And would it not be appropriate then for this to get refunded? Just say if we would like to see, if I would want to see a, an updated hydrology report from your structures folks?
I mean, ideally, yes. However, the re, we're going to basically have to start all over again from scratch. And we've gotten so far at this point, the, the funding would be, I guess you could say, we're going to have to reapply for the funding to, for this project. Did you get that?
Yeah, that re, reapply to, to whom?
To try to get funding for this project again. To get the, the funding would be taken away, basically. And in order to get the funding back, we're going to have to reapply. And I, I'm not fully knowledgeable about, about the process, what will need to be done, but it will be a process nonetheless, basically starting over again to get the funding back in place. And that would take, I, I, I don't know how long that would take, a few months or maybe even a few years for it to, for us to get back to our, where we are right now with this project.
Thank you.
Are we at a point where anyone wants to entertain a motion?
Yes, excuse me. I'd be happy to make a motion that the planning commission approve the resolution at hand, PDP dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-five, to grant a coastal development permit allowing Caltrans to mitigate scour at the Highway One Pillar Cetus Creek Bridge with, with the knowledge that the city of Half Moon Bay expresses a strong desire for any offsite mitigation to take place along Pillar Cetus Creek within the city limits.
I will second that motion. Do we want to have a discussion?
Barring that Caltrans not performing an updated report for the hydrology from the chief structural design, would the city entertain some kind of evaluation to see if any of the work that will be done by Caltrans would affect the downstream population, the downstream development, residential developments and the sewer plant?
You're looking in my direction. I don't think this is a legal question. I think this is a staff and budget question. I was wondering if our engineering department had been involved in the review of this and had, had looked at this as well. But I don't know if Doug has a thought on that.
Engineering has been involved and reviewed it and submitted comments. I guess my, my thoughts on this, and I can't speak for Caltrans or anybody else, it might be worth exploring if it's feasible to do sort of an abbreviated update that would address some of your key points, whether that would come back to the planning commission or whether city staff, engineering staff would review that and make a decision. I, I think that's on the table. And, and again, I think Caltrans probably ought to weigh in. I, I know one of their consultants did mention they were on the site after the storm and did some observations with geomorphologists. I don't think they were looking at would any of this affect the SAM sewer plant. And I, I don't want to put words in any geomorphologist's mouth, but I, I assume they could tweak their model a little bit and just say this far downstream, the effects would be whatever.
I see. Ramel, would you would like to speak?
Yeah, Doug, we, we could definitely have our hydraulics, hydraulic engineer consultants take a look at how the project affects the downstream at that facility that Madam Chair is mentioning. I guess you mentioned an abbreviated review. Was there Jennifer on the line? Would you be able to speak on that? Would we be able to do a abbreviated, I guess, review and see how the downstream facility would be affected by this project? Someone from H D R Echo?
Hi, Ramel, this is Shannon. Jen, hi, yeah. Jen is not on the call right now, but I can speak to that. The hydraulics that we modeled for our proposed design at Pillar Cetus did not impact the hydraulics of the downstream end. It only changed the velocities of the water at the site, but it didn't impact the hydraulics downstream.
Do we have that report readily available and possibly can provide to the commission for their files or even review?
Yeah, we can give them that report. Our results, I don't know the exact distance downstream our hydraulic model goes. I think it's a hundred, a couple hundred feet or so. So I don't exactly know where the plant is downstream, but we did not evaluate that level of detail of downstream impacts in our hydraulic model, just directly downstream of the project site. And we saw that the hydraulics conformed to something that's comparable to the existing condition. So our project didn't have significant impacts on the hydraulics downstream.
So the, our, your, the model showed no significant impacts roughly a hundred feet downstream of our site, much less further down where that facility is mentioned? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If I may, I, it occurs to me, excuse me, it occurs to me that a few, a few times since I've been on planning commission, we have passed motions that include a proviso that we would invite staff pending future discovery or input to, to make reasonable and minor modifications to the resolution. I would wonder, in this case, what you suggest is a, is I think a good idea. And I'd be happy to offer an amendment to my motion that, that this, this, we would, we would require the city engineer to review the information coming from Caltrans just to be reassured that there are no downstream impacts to be expected. If that appeals to my peers.
So you're going to modify your motion to include that?
If, if that seems reasonable to you.
And if Doug says they can do that abbreviated or abridged, that sounds.
My, my thought process was there's a fair amount of data they've already put together for their modeling. And it's, when I say abbreviated, I, I don't mean, you know, a paltry cheap kind of, I mean, they're using the existing data, they could probably tweak some of the assumptions and parameters of the model and without burning a lot of time or resources, I think they could give us some assurance that would address your concerns. That, that's what I was thinking and hoping could be done.
Specifically, the residential area and the SAM plant, just to be sure.
I'm sorry, which residential area?
So the area that got flooded.
Oak, Oak Park area?
Yes, that was significant and I'd hate for that to happen again.
Well, in that case, I'd like to offer an amendment to my motion that, that we require.
Yeah, I didn't know. I'm sorry, I didn't answer up to you, but.
Somebody else to speak?
There's someone from Caltrans that wanted to, Gregory Para, I didn't know if you wanted to do any clarifications or not. I just wanted to let you know before you continue.
Sure, sure.
Okay, hold on. Let me just free him here. Greg, I didn't know if you had anything to add. You can speak now.
Yes. Hi, Gregory Para, I'm the senior biologist for the project. I just wanted to make a quick note about the mitigation site location and that, as Dylan had mentioned previously, that we try to locate our mitigation sites, even the offsite locations, within the same watershed. We do try to aim them within like the same creek situation as physically close as possible. But there are risks to placing a mitigation site kind of near an area where there are substantial amounts of people, just sort of based on the issue that other regulatory agencies will give us success criteria that we need to meet and criteria such as plant growth, establishment and survival. And if we place it, place plants, riparian vegetation in an area that we don't completely control as part of our right of way, or aren't able to isolate in some way from other human visitors, we run the risk of it having failures, or maybe we can't successfully access the site all the time to provide watering in the initial establishment phase. So I'd just like to raise a concern about that. Caltrans will absolutely try to place an offsite as near as possible. Just within the city limits may be a challenge. Thank you.
I think I understand what you're saying. So if we, if the city would require the offsite mitigation within the Pillar Cetus Creek, there would have to be some level of guarantee that that population that's living there would no longer have the ability to live there? Is that what we're trying to say? So that the success of the planting, so whatever else that needs to go there, would be at higher a degree of success? Likewise, if there's any other sites that we pick within the city's watersheds or the wat, the watersheds within the city, any adjacent human interaction, the city would have to provide some level of guarantee that it will also help monitor human intervention from the success of that mitigation? Is that correct? I think that's what I heard.
That, that is, has been a topic of conversation. And that's partly why this Pillar Cetus Creek restoration program has, has been plugging along. That certainly if, you know, once you start going through these agencies and you have a five-year monitoring program, but meeting certain performance standards for the amount of vegetation, it could be a, you know, just a never-ending battle. And we have discussed that internally. I think we would, that's partly why we haven't really agreed on what sites we would use in Pillar Cetus Creek. It would be coordinated with some other. It would be coordinated with some other projects we are considering, putting in some additional fencing around the, behind the Safeway, things like that. But yeah, at some level, we're here, the city would, I think, be on the hook for monitoring and making sure that, one way or another, that areas that are specifically being restored, subject to monitoring, would remain undisturbed. Are we, do we have an appetite for an amendment?
Yes.
So I'd like to amend my motion to say the CDP approval is contingent on the city quickly reviewing all relevant Caltrans data on downstream impacts and confirming that there will be no negative impacts downstream in the recently flooded residential area or to the sewer plant.
And would we want to add the mitigation measures as best as we can, have them within the city limits?
Well, that was part of the... That was part of the original motion.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry. It wasn't, it was the city, my motion said the city would voice a strong preference for that, but I stopped short of saying we'd condition approval on that. I take it from the biologist's remarks a minute ago that it's a complicated thing with a lot of different approving agencies, and I'd hate to make it too complex.
I second that motion. I agree with you on that, even though I would love the idea of a condition of approval, but given that there are so many other agencies involved in permitting this project, I think, you know, I'm hoping city staff works with Caltrans to find a suitable place on Pillar Cidos Creek because we do have a lot of issues with the creek that need to be addressed. So I just, that's all I wanted to say about that.
So sorry to bring this up, but I noticed that the city said that a minimum of three to one, of a three to one ratio, can then the city require a maximum amount? Or can it be increased so that we have the higher likelihood of success of the plantings around Pillar Cidos Creek?
The published guidance from the Coastal Commission for Riparian Vegetation says three to one. That's what's in our land use plan. There are scenarios where we could require more. It's entirely possible that one of the other agencies will require more, and whatever the highest requirement is, that's where we're going. I do think because of the, we do have to have performance standards, the amount of ground cover, the variety of species, all of that's written into the restoration requirement with regular monitoring, reporting, which sometimes you just take a shotgun approach. Like you said, you plant a whole bunch of trees and some of them will live and you sort of forget about it. This is one where there's going to be a lot of oversight and monitoring. So if they're not hitting the performance standards, which may really not even be measured in terms of three to one, it may be what's the total ground cover, what's the species diversity? There are a number of things that typically get written into these, and that's probably what would drive it.
I just thought I'd give it a shot.
I think my amendment needs a second.
Oh, I thought I seconded it.
I have a second.
I did.
Ready to vote? All right, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Pulling up the agenda. So at this point, we would ask Jill to give us the director's report, please.
Thank you very much. This will be brief. Agenda forecast for the planning commission, your next meeting is in three weeks on September 12th, and we are planning a joint study session of this commission with the Architectural Advisory Committee for a look at the downtown streetscapes project. We may also have time for a study session on the Smith Field project, so we are trying to make the best use of your time as we can. September 26th, we have the safety element also in a study session format. It's early days in the planning and updating of that general plan document. And coastal development permit amendment for a portion of the Poplar Complete Streets project will be brought to you by the Public Works staff. We do know we're getting concerned about attendance and trying to get our minutes approved, so please keep Bridget up to date, and she will reach out to all of you in email just so that we can track this. At some point, if we can't get a quorum on them, the city clerk will advise us to just post them so that public has access to them. Let's see here. Architectural Advisory Committee, their August meeting was canceled. Their next session is September 14th, which is, of course, a couple days after you'll see them in joint session. That agenda is firming up. It looks mostly like a little bit of single-family development coming before them. We have a community development director item tomorrow afternoon. It is in addition to a single-family home at 421 Magnolia. This is an administrative review and it's a courtesy notice. And then just the rest of this, I'd like to give you a little update on two bodies of work that the planning commission spent a lot of time on. The short-term vacation rental ordinance and home occupation ordinance, those were combined. The Coastal Commission confirmed them on August 10th, so they are now officially certified by the Coastal Commission as having the city council's readoption being consistent with the Coastal Commission's previous conditional certification. Staff is preparing now to register everyone, so they've updated the website, they are finalizing FAQs. We have an application form, council's already approved application fees, and very soon staff will be sending letters to all of our current operators to encourage them to get started with their first registration. They have six months to complete that. We had a bit of a generous startup period for the first go-round. So that is moving forward. We're absolutely delighted. It took several years to get to this point. I can tell you that we get called fairly regularly from other jurisdictions wondering, how did Half Moon Bay do that? And we let them know that it's a combination of a lot of hard work with our planning commission, our city council, and of course, our community members who have been tracking this all the way through and attended the Coastal Commission hearings. The other one is the housing element. So the Housing and Community Development Department for the state has been in a 90-day review period on the draft housing element, and their letter to the city is due at the end of this month. We've been working with them. We were able to, they came our way, and we were able to tour them so they could see all of our housing opportunity sites that were selected by the planning commission and city council through this public process. They gave us some advice on some program areas and some background, kind of the local data that they wanted to see, a little bit more depth in the housing element. So your housing coordinator, Mike Noche, and I have been working hard to compile some preliminary responses and revisions that would be suited to what they're requesting from us. Of course, they would all be subject to review recommendation by this commission and, of course, ultimate approval by city council, but we have sent those out. They are subject to a seven-day public review period, and that period starts tomorrow. You should have an email about this. This just got sent out before your meeting started tonight. So we're well on our way. We'll keep you updated. We don't know, you know, no jurisdiction knows what their letter's going to be like. So we will take a look at it when it comes in, and we will update this commission and, of course, city council. So thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any commissioner communications?
Oh, just one quick thing. I'm sympathetic to the gentleman who was here and talked about the existing problems on that trail under the bridge, and I don't know whether Public Works knows about it, but I wonder if somebody on staff would volunteer to pass that along to them as maybe there's some short-term improvements could be made. Public Works is aware of it. Brief conversation with them over the last couple of days. I'm not sure what the interim solution is, but yeah, they are aware of it and will look into that. Thank you, Doug.
I have a follow-up question, and I think Commissioner Reddick had this question at the last meeting where I didn't attend, and it was about the landfill issue over at Poplar. I still see that there are torn sections that are visible. It's getting worse. I was wondering whether the city had received any communications from the county as to the status of their monitoring or, you know, what's causing the debris to show up or if that is debris or landfill material.
I also noticed it along the cover that they put on the bluff itself going down towards the ocean. That is starting to open up at the top. So I didn't know if, I actually made, anyone could walk on the beach and see it, but...
I will respond to that. The city manager and city engineer have been in contact with San Mateo County staff. We will get back to them and let them know that you're waiting for some responses. I'm not sure what has come back. I haven't seen anything come through my emails. So we'll check on it and appreciate your diligence in looking at it. And I just want to confirm, you're talking about the revetment just south of the Poplar parking lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's, the area is located on the north, the north side. You'll see some of the revetment is coming away at the top.
Okay, thank you.
You know what? I think that is part of damage that the county is requesting storm damage about, so I'm not, anyway, it would be nice to know what the issue is, but definitely the first issue that I had reported on is getting worse. So...
All right, thank you.
I received an email from a resident with pictures that showed visitors driving over the walkway at Poplar that was recently reinstalled because the gate was shut down. And a few, a month or so ago, when they started closing the gate at night, someone drove through the fence and knocked the fence down. So anyway, I walked the site to check it out, and I noticed that stormwater goes into this gully along the southern side of the Poplar trail that goes down to the ocean. And so something has to be done. I'm not going to say what needs to be done because that's not up for me to decide or for the commission, but the fact that they're driving over a gully that conveys stormwater during the winter, I don't know if that can degrade over time and will impact the flow, sheet flow during storms, but there has to be some sort of remedy to prevent folks from driving over the sidewalk and a ditch. It's not really a ditch, maybe it's a gully that manages stormwater, so, yeah, there were a couple cars driving over it the other night.
Actually, thank you for bringing that up. I almost forgot. Somebody said that while they were walking their dog at dark hours, I guess the bridge, the gate was shut, so the cars, because they couldn't get out, drove over the landfill site and was actually driving right towards this person to get onto that road, leaving Poplar, yes. So, yeah, it was, I think they were trying to get to Magnolia or something like that.
Okay.
So it's happening now, and they almost got run over, and this just happened about a few nights ago.
It makes you wonder if the current strategy with that gate is working. I know of several instances of cars driving on the Poplar path after the gate was locked.
Yeah, and there might be Esha in that bluff, especially during...
It is, yes.
Yeah, so I hate to see cars driving on the bluff at night.
Or hitting anybody.
Exactly. More important, yes.
I guess we, in the spirit of what can we actually do about this, I guess interested parties should talk to our city council members, urge them to have the right dialogue with the sheriff's office.
We will also make sure the sheriff is aware. Please know that, and the city manager. We appreciate all of your reports on this. Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Probably we all do. I move we adjourn.
I second. We could do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.